Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I follow your lead. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Alderman meeting for Monday, July 21, 2025. First order of business for tonight's meeting is to entertain a nomination of Board President as President O'Leary is acting Mayor for the next two weeks.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to nominate Alderman Donahue.
I second.
Madam Clerk, I move to close nominations.
Second. All those in favor of Alderman Donahue for Board President, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We'll call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with our additions, deletions, and other modifications to the agenda. And, well, we'll go ahead and start there, and I'd remind everyone that there's a couple of executive sessions, and then I have another suggestion as well. So what is your pleasure there? Any amendments, additions, deletions, modifications to the agenda? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to move the executive sessions to the end of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And if I could, so we'll start with those two, which is both Director Coyle, and she's here. Thank you. I say you're here. Yep, we're going to move you to the end of the agenda for the executive session? Okay. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One other suggestion I would like to make is, under Police Chief Kilcullen's request, looking at the state statute for items that fall under executive session, contracts, labor relations, agreements with employees, all fall into the first things listed on the state statute. So I was going to suggest that we move Chief Kilcullen's item to the end of the agenda for an executive session as well.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I was going to recognize Alderman Donahue.
Is there a reason we wouldn't want to have that discussion in public view?
Would not want to?
Yeah.
I'm flexible, I'm just offering as a suggestion. From the chair, I won't try to influence folks, so just making that suggestion, and period. So we'll go up, you were next, Bill.
You're asking what?
I was asking about moving that to the end of the agenda.
Oh, I said so moved, yeah.
Okay. So there is a motion on the floor to do so. Do we have a second to that motion?
Yes.
Alderman Kupaly, any further discussion on that motion?
Sorry, a clarification, is it just to move it to the end, or it's to move it to the end and make it an executive session?
Both.
I don't, okay, well, I will vote no because I don't feel that this needs to be an executive session.
Understood. Alderman McClure, Alderman McClure, thank you.
Thank you. I yield to Chief Kilcullen to ask what his comfort would be, as it was warned on the agenda not as an executive session, so I'm unsure if it was his prerogative to have this conversation in public forum, not to mention the individuals, I believe, are here, so would that exclude them from the conversation if done in private forum? But I yield to Chief to ask that question.
Yeah. If you're comfortable with that, Chief, go ahead.
I don't have a preference, I would defer to the pleasure of the Board. I think it is a topic that is authorized or eligible to be discussed in executive session and not subject to discussion in, as a public discussion, but again, I defer to the Board on that.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the chair is in doubt, could I show hands for those in favor of the motion, please? One, two, three, four, five, and those opposed? One, two, three, and so five to three, the motion would fail. Moving along. We'll go to, is there anything else to change on the agenda before we, if not, we would reckon, it would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any debate on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Check. All right, now we're to the portion of the agenda called Public Comment. Following on President O'Leary, now Acting Mayor O'Leary's lead, I just wanted to open it up, we'll start with those raising their hands who would like to speak a public item that's not on the agenda, and I would also just like to remind you that what we'd like to do is have any actionable item for the Board, but also try to be respectful of everyone's time and keep it to about five minutes or less. So with that, I see Tony Romeo, is this fair? And Mr. Giffen, right? And if you could, just technically announce your name and address for the record.
Tony Romeo, South Street, Rutland.
Tom Giffen, East Washington Street, Rutland.
Thank you.
At your last regular meeting, my friend Tom was here talking about the World War II monument. I was kind of taken back that there wasn't one either. For 18 years, I was president of an organization called the Rutland Veterans Council, and that was formed in 1950 and was disbanded in 2017, I think it was, which was formed by World War II veterans. And during my tenure of 18 years, we worked on many projects throughout the city, and I can't believe that their monument was never one of our projects. So I called Tom the next day, and we went back and forth on a couple thoughts, contacted Will Ellis from the Legion, and Ron Ferret, who was commander at the Legion, John Pizanelli at the VFW, and Mickey Young from the VFW, and we're going to take the bull by the horns, we're going to take this project on. We formed ourselves a committee, we've met once already, threw around some ideas, and hopefully we'll get the ball rolling. I asked Alderman Larry Kupaly, being a veteran, if he would join our committee, and he agreed. So going forward, we're just kind of putting some ideas together and seeing where we can go with it, and hopefully we can get something going, we're not probably looking at 2016, or 2026 rather, probably more towards 2027.
Awesome.
I was going to say Larry really wanted to do it, reluctantly agreed, but really nice to see after my speaking at the Board last meeting, to have so many people contact me and are interested. One thing about Rutland community, they always seem to rally around a good project, and it was really nice to see so many people interested in doing the right thing on this, and thank Tony for helping and organizing it, and I hope that we'll have something to report back to the Board in the near future of what our plan is. Thank you.
Excellent. So along with that, I just want to mention that it is in the Community and Economic Development Committee, and, you know, certainly there might be some parks involved, some permitting and so forth, and we would be anxious to be on that side of the equation to assist getting this across the finish line.
Absolutely.
And thank you for having that great list of people step up, and we appreciate Alderman Kupaly, who's a former member of the United States Air Force, for participating as well.
I believe he's going to be Chair of the Committee.
He doesn't know that yet.
All in favor?
I don't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you both very much, that's exciting news. All right, Mr. Alderman Kupaly? Yes? If you could, your name and address for the record, please, and the floor is yours.
Tiffany Clark, and I live at 115 Library Ave.
Thank you.
I'm trying to make this five minutes or less. In seven months, I lost my mom, my brother, my sister, my best friend of 20 years, my aunt, and my uncle. I was in the motel program for three years, I was sexually harassed there, I moved out into a rooming house, and I currently hold an RFA on the landlord for abuse of a vulnerable adult, calling me a stupid psycho, and all kinds of other things. I confronted her about buying drugs off the street in a text message, four days later she has pulled a no cause eviction on me. I gave Rutland County Mental Health my eviction that was given to me in January 28. I pushed this eviction as far as I could go, which was until September 1, when I have to leave. They have done not one application with me. I have called there, I called the other day at 7:57 in the morning crisis, I told them I had my sleeping pills in my hand and I was suicidal. They did not even call me back. I had to have my son's father drive three hours to come and be with me. I am being abused at the house I'm in now, at the rooming house. I'm sorry for this comment, but he also told me that he petted my pussy. He meant my kittens, but that's not something a landlord says to a tenant. He is continuing to rent to people, continuing to abuse them. This is Chris Alexander and Charles Burns, and I am at my wit's end, I don't know what to do right now, I really don't. I've had all this time, and now I have to clog up the motel system again, using my 80 days. And it just, it's not right, and this is, you know, I'm sorry, but I look around Rutland, I see the addicts, I mean, it's obvious, and I've been fighting for four years, you know? Is it easier to fight for four years, or go out and pick up, you know, the drug of your choice, and just forget it all? And that's what I'm here about. I'm fighting, I'm fighting with everything I've got, but like I told my son's father, I'm getting tired, I'm exhausted, and I don't know what else to do. Rutland County Mental Health has completely failed me. I reached out to homeless prevention because their housing lady was on medical leave, homeless prevention had me drop off my eviction, my proof of income, I did so, Sarah Orbits changed my mailing address because there was holding mail on me, and they didn't even work with me. So, I mean, this is the struggle I am going through right now, and I gave them plenty of time to try to get something in place, because I do have the VOA Act, I currently hold an RFA on my ex-boyfriend too. So, thank you.
And my condolences for the loss of your family members? My condolences, our condolences for the loss of your family members?
Thank you, that's all I had, that was all I had. That was my support system, and they're all gone. Only thing I got from my father was an email wanting me to release my mother's body to him, so he could make himself right by God. So, that's the support I have.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on something not on the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Chair.
I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Chair, can I speak?
Yeah, the only thing I would ask, is it different from last meetings?
Well, it could be different.
Yes, please step right up.
Hi, my name is Alexis Moore, and I live at 38 Pine Street in Rutland. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And so we're going to talk briefly, a couple minutes, about a house that's boarded up, which is number 36 on Pine Street. It used to be the site of drug dealing, homeless, they tore the place up. It's owned by Alan, who has a history in this block, the third block of Pine Street, of using up properties and then just flinging them, and eventually the city takes over. 36 Pine Street is following the same pattern, and so I'm here to talk about how we can refurbish cheaply and make the property functional, so that it serves
Thank you, excuse me. Let's get the floor.
So that it serves the community. The children, the children in Pine Street are the biggest victims of the drug epidemic we're having, in Rutland as a whole, but somehow that third block seems to be the focus of drug dealing, possible manufacture, and enormous use. I mean, I've seen needles and pipes, and running around in the middle of the night in cars with handwritten tags, and it is just enormously suspicious activity there, and while we're trying to clean that up, you know, I am hoping that that boarded up house can be used as a children's daycare, for two reasons, because there's a lot of biracial minority, little kids that are living in poverty with a single parent, usually a mother or a grandmother. I see this every day, I live there, I walk around a lot, I care about my community, I look at things. And if they only had a place where they could be taken in during the day and be given professional services, you know, professional care, not just be given to anybody that can take care of it while their mothers struggle, that would be an enormous benefit to save their lives and then start cleaning up Pine Street in that way. And then second, let's talk about the mural. You know, over here, it's a young woman looking at books, and a couple months ago, I was over by the church, and a young woman with a little girl approached me, and she asked me if I worked for the daycare, that's denominational, and I said, no, I don't go to the services and I don't work, but I see those kids in that playground all the time, they look happy. She wanted daycare so her kid would have a good education, and then apparently she wanted to get some technical training. I didn't really delve into it, but I encouraged her. I haven't seen her, but this is the need, that we can fight the poverty and the endemic drug use, and the idea that maybe they can have some kind of life with drugs in some aspect, maybe we can make it a little bit easier for the young women in this community that have kids to get an education, get some technical training, if we could only take care of their kids while they do this, and then the kids would be taken care of too, because a lot of these single parent households, they are also in need of services, so what are they passing on to their kids? And so that's what I think about. And then I have different stories that I see every day, like little kids running around on the sidewalk in the summer with nothing to do. I saw one, it was like three years old, chasing his dog, and it was right on the, where people speed, and I asked him, where's your mother? And she was about four buildings away, and so what is she going to do if a car passes by and catches the kid? And I saw something similar on Sunday, two young girls on bicycles trying to cross the intersection of State and Pine in that area, one of them did it okay, the other one almost got hit by a car. These are older kids, but if we start with the boarded up house, that used to have a tent in the back where the people could go in, and I don't even know what they did in there, but I have photos, and of, you know, the thing with bicycles and people coming in, and people coming in from the mental health building out to that backyard, and it, you know, it would be, it would be more beneficial to utilize a building in our community for the benefit of everybody there. See, you don't, guys don't know these things because you don't live on Pine Street, but I do, and if we could start with one building that would serve the little kids, the smallest, then maybe we can start branching out, and if we can save those little kids, we can also give a little to their mother, so they can get the training they need, so they can move their lives forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Just I'll go around the room one more time, just to make sure no one else has come in that wants to speak to the Board of Alderman on something not on the agenda this evening that is pertinent to our actions, and seeing none, we will move on to, I did want to just take a pause here on communications from the Mayor, since we have Acting Mayor O'Leary here, and I just wanted to know if there was anything you wanted to bring to the Board tonight.
Well, there isn't except, thank you, and I just wanted to let everyone know that I have chatted with Tony about the memorial, and offered my assistance and the Board's general assistance, I know it's in committee, so we will be looking at, but, you know, I think that is something that the City would embrace, and a perfect project for us going forward, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam, what's up?
Thank you. All right, moving right along, we're on to the special event permit for the Recreation Department, National Night Out at Meadow Street, which is on a Tuesday evening, August 5, coming right up. The first thing we'd have to do is suspend the rules to take that up tonight. Oh, thank you, Bill. Second. And, whoop, no debate on that. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so if we could, Alderman McClure.
Is there an individual here from the Rec Department to speak?
There is.
Calling National Night Out?
There is.
Should we put a motion on the floor first?
Hi, everyone, I'll keep it as brief as I can because I don't have voice.
I feel bad for calling on you, I'm sorry.
It's okay. National Night Out is coming up just over two weeks, we have 36 vendors signed up, this is usually when we get to that number of 50, really pushing it out to people. We have a long list of sponsors, we have a lot of in-kind donors, all of which can be listed on, or you can find listed on our website, and we are just continuing to make it the biggest and best event we can. Any questions?
Just a comment from the chair, it's a great event. Alderman McClure.
Is there going to be a dunk tank again this year? Because that is the number one thing I hear amazing reviews about.
Yes, so Wurley's World is bringing, I think, seven bounce houses, which is an increased volume from recent years, along with his dunk tank. And he donates all of that, so it's just a really exciting time.
And your tanking volunteers, is that what?
Yes. Officer Rosario should be sending out an email to the Board shortly to ask if anybody wants to help serve food or get dunked in the tank.
Excellent.
Yes.
Alderman Donahue.
I will make a motion to approve the special event permit for National Night Out on Tuesday, August 5, 2025, from 4:00 PM till 7:00 PM. Second.
Thank you, okay. Any further debate on that of any kind? No? Okay. All those in favor of that motion, then please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much, we look forward to it. And next we have Planning Director Bove, again, with an item if we would move to suspend the rules, and we'll take that up tonight.
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules and take up the item from the Planning Director Bove this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Planning Director Bove.
Hello.
Aforementioned.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me. There is a resolution, I believe, has been sent around for the State of Vermont Sales Tax reallocation program. We are applying for that, the city and the hotel team, for approximately $500,000 to go into the funding pot for the Center Street, Whale Street, and Hotel redevelopment project. Any questions on that?
I would just point out that it was an item in the list of the city's commitments in the developer agreement, that we would make a forthright attempt to submit that application.
Bless you.
And so this is completing that, that item.
This is, this completes really the first round of our funding applications that we've put in. We submitted the Vtrans application a couple of weeks ago, we received Northern Borders, the TIF bond is coming up this fall, and so that'll be the first grouping of sources we're trying to put together for the project, which I sent around the Sources and Uses table last meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Gillen.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to take the matter up tonight.
And we did that. We did that first before I let him come up.
We didn't make no motion for to suspend the rules?
Yep.
We did?
Yep. Passed, too.
Okay, so I make a motion then to circulate for signatures.
Second. Prove and circulate for signatures, okay. Most have been made and seconded. Any discussion, debate, et cetera. Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. So we will get that going around.
A point of order, Mr. President.
Yes, Alderman Gillen.
I believe we didn't approve the minutes, did we approve the minutes?
Oh, did I, did I jump over that here?
No, we approved the minutes from last meeting.
Were you approve the minutes?
Actually, I don't think, I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
We did, we did.
Did I? Boy, I'm more efficient than I think. Okay, all right.
We did or we didn't?
We did.
I didn't think we did, but should we approve again just to be sure, or?
I don't know.
Yeah, let's.
A point of order.
Would that be in order?
Clerk should have recorded that.
Yes, and they, that was missed.
It was missed?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So as a point of order, could we go back to that before we move on to the next item on the agenda? Do we have any changes to the minutes of July 7, or additions or deletions, or a motion to approve as written? And I apologize for missing, jumping right over that. Okay.
If not, I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Alderman Gillen. Do we have a second to that motion? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Pretty sure that passed.
We.
All right, thank you. Thanks for pointing that out, Bill. All right, on to Assistant Engineer Gillen, and since this is a referral, we don't have to suspend any rules, we'll give you the floor.
The Water Department provides a couple services to outside entities, like hydrant flow testing, to engineering firms, and hydrant maintenance fees to, they maintain hydrants for private businesses, or Rutland Town, stuff like that. The fees haven't been revisited and adjusted to today's standards in a long time, so I would ask that you refer that to DPW, so we can set a more reasonable fee that will cover our costs.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And I would just want to point out that you're not Ted Gillen, so thank you for, yeah.
It's the Commissioner of Public Works.
In person, in person. All right. Any discussion about sending that to committee? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Bob?
So the second one asks to refer the River Street Bridge project to the DPW committee, their AOT has got on the books to redo the bridge over here, over the train tracks, in the next few years. There's a public hearing on the 18th of August for a Board, before a Board of Alderman meeting. We just want to talk about some ideas we have for maybe some requests we might make of them, see if they'll go along with, mostly safety improvements along the lines of wider sidewalk, or crosswalk, stuff like that, so.
So getting in a committee and the intent is also to have your comments together so that the committee can present any concern, because it's kind of a concerns meeting by the Vermont Agency of Transportation, so that you'd be able to voice those concerns collectively?
Correct.
All right, Alderman Gillen.
Move to refer to Public Works Committee.
Second. Okay. Motion in a second, any debate? Yes?
The reason why we're doing this is part of the state requirement, because the state is actually doing the project, the bridge is over the railroad, so it's a state project, so they have to have public input, and that's the reason why we're going through this process.
Excellent. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, so that's in your hands now, Bill.
Yes.
Okay, now we are at the portion of the agenda that we discussed earlier, so we will recognize the Chief of Police, Frank Kilcullen. If it pleases the Board, we would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to take this item up this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Okay, Chief, the floor is yours now, you get to go home a little earlier tonight.
All right, thank you. So you likely remember at the June 16 meeting, the Board approved to set two of our positions to the Police Department at the appropriate pay grades. One was the Staff Operations Specialist job at a management grade 12, and the second was Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police at a non-management grade 11, and that, you know, that action was a culmination of a really lengthy process. It started about a year ago, at least with one of those positions, when, working with the Mayor, we had a budgeted, a particular raise for the Executive Assistant. the mayor, we had a budgeted, a particular raise for, for the Executive Assistant, and so that was sort of tied up going forward. It wasn't applied last Jan, last July, and so over the course of the year, we tried to address that. Eventually identified the appropriate job description, because when this individual was hired twelve years ago, it was a, not a terribly exhaustive job description, and going forward from there to, to last July, we, you know, realized that the job description that was in place was, didn't accurately reflect the duties of the position, and so, again, working with the HR Director, we came up with that job description, and it ultimately got the approval of the Board to set that at a grade 11. The second position was formerly a union position, I'm sorry, a non-union position, and held by a sergeant within the Police Department. It's, it's, most of the, all of the activity in that position is, it doesn't need to be performed by a sworn officer, although it was held by a sergeant, and so going back a few years, you know, we looked at the Table of Organizations, said, you know, this particular job doesn't need to be done by a sworn officer, and so we need all our sworn officers doing police work, and so we civilianized that job, and at the time, we were really left with, and kind of worked with the Union on that, and really, we were left with the pay scales that existed at the time, which were Union pay scales. Going forward, after a couple of years, I think we all, both the management and the Union agreed, this was really a confidential position that needed to come out of the Union. And so, again, we negotiated that. The contract, as you know, was ratified in March, and then again, working with the HR Director, identified the appropriate pay grade for that. So again, the process to set those pay grades took some time, but again, they, both of those, with both those jobs, the process really started about a year ago, and so now that we've gotten through that, and again, I was asked this question at one of the meetings that we, where these matters were discussed, I think it was an HR Committee meeting, whether the pay should be retro, and if you remember, my, my answer was, in my position, that they are retroactive. At least, you know, certainly with the Staff Operations Specialist, that contract wasn't ratified until March, but the terms of that agreement are retroactive to July 1st, and so for that reason, we're looking for approval to provide that retroactive pay for both of these positions, as, as, as set forth in the memo I sent to you.
Just one minor note, well, not really minor, but just one note I should say, was in your letter, it did indicate 2025, July 1, and I believe it should be July 1, 2024.
Correct, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
That's right.
Fiscal 25.
Fiscal 25, okay. All right. Questions for the Chief? Let's start there. Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
I'm just, I'm just...
Alderman Clifford.
I'm just, uh, not know enough about this, I'm, I'm not really comfortable with, you know, with, with approving this tonight. I'd rather see it in committee to talk about it some more, but that's where I'm at.
There's no motion on the floor, you can make a motion to refer, if you'd like.
Point of order, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, this item already is in committee, that's why it's here now, because it's gone through this committee process already, and been voted on twice.
Alderwoman Tadde.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve the retroactive pay to July 1 of 2025, to the Staff Operations Specialist, in the amount of $16,342, and to the Executive Assistant to the Chief of Police, in the amount of $9,007.64.
Second.
The requested figure is subject to the verification by payroll treasurer staff as well.
Can I just ask again, because I think I heard you say 25, but I do think that it's supposed to be 2024?
Oh, yeah, it should be 2024, yeah, to 2020, to July 1, 2024.
Thank you. And did I hear a second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Further, well, not further debate, debate on the motion, it's on the floor currently.
If willing, I would just kind of like to hear feedback from our HR Director, potentially treasurer, about, is this appropriate, the sequence of events? One of the things that's fortunately not included in our minutes tonight, is the collection of discussion that had happened dating up to this. I do recall that there was, within certain committee meetings, speaking to retroactive pay. I just can't remember what we had dated it back to, and like, what the whole sequence was, so if anyone can shed light on that, I would really appreciate it.
Does any department heads outside the realm have any insight regarding the retroactive nature of the... Okay, so we'll hear from our City Treasurer, Mary Markus.
Okay, I have not seen the calculation, so I'm not sure what it is. I left my notes over there, I, I thought we threw it into executive session, so I apologize, but one of the positions was a non-union, so it was awarded a, an increase consistent with the non-union, as of 7/1/24, so, and then the other position was still, was in other, in the union, so was awarded a retro consistent with what the bargaining agreement was in March, when the contract was signed, so. I don't recall in HR Committee that the committee specifically discussed and voted to go 7/1/24, because I know that I personally would have spoken up about that, and had some concerns about going back a year, so we just set a tax rate, now we're going to go back and dip in and toss another $15,000 expense to 2025, so.
Well, I think it's, am I right in saying it's $25,347, or 347, yeah? Is that, is that right?
So, again, the, the terms of the agreement that were rat, that, the contract was ratified, were retroactive to July 1 of '24. If you remember, soon after that was ratified, part of the contract applied, mentioned a $750 stipend provided for the sworn members and the dispatchers, and at the time, the treasurer stood here and mentioned that there were certain employees who were not employed at the time, were not employed on July 1, '24, almost saying that the terms apply to those who were, they're retro to July 1, '24, and if they weren't on the books in July 1, '24, it doesn't apply. This individual, you know, both these individuals were employed in July 1, '24. One, as I mentioned in the memo, was absolutely tied to the, to the terms of the contract. The second one wasn't tied to the contract per se, but again, goes back to a year ago, almost a year and a half ago now, when we first budgeted the raise for this individual. That process was, wasn't the appropriate process to follow to provide that raise, and so again, working with the Police Commission, and with the HR Director, developed that job description to, but again, it took that long. One, one of the things that held it up was that we had asked for the, what's described, what's defined as the classification plan in the employee handbook, which we never got, which, which talks about, in, in that classification plan, it's supposed to have pay grades, job descriptions, qualifications, we never got that, and so, so this dragged out as long as it did for a number of reasons. We're only here a year after, you know, this, the retro that we're looking for, because of, for a number of reasons, as I said. Not that it was anyone's fault, but negotiations started late, they ended late, and there were other documents that we never got, and so that's why we're here today. The question was absolutely asked during one of the committee meetings, and my answer, and again, not that everyone had to agree, but I was asked the question, and my position was that it was retroactive, and as I said, it's, those two affected by this, it was not their fault that it took this long, but it did take this long.
Alderman Whitcomb, I just wanted to go back to you for a second, because you're asking for some input from outside the rail, and just wanted to see if you had any further questions, or if you, if that was enlightening in any way to help you?
It does help give us some context, I guess.
Alderman McClure.
I believe Alderman Whitcomb's question was about the appropriateness, and he did mention the HR Director, so I just wonder if HR Director Coyle has anything she would like to speak on? I believe that this was a matter we discussed in the HR Committee. It was not, was this public safety?
So just so that everyone's aware, we can start the process.
Yeah, I apologize, but I think we have to have you in front of the microphone, but thank you for... Take your time. No hurry.
So, we did start this process, and there were three items on the agenda. The only item that actually got brought to conclusion was two approved, accurate job descriptions for the two non-union individuals that we are talking about, and then a follow-up to that was the chief agreeing to where those individuals had been slotted for that particular reason. The whole reason for the executive session, and I wish that this had gone into the executive session and not be brought out here, is because there are some other things that you probably need to be aware of before you make a decision on this, and that truly is, I don't think, at this moment in time, that it's appropriate for this conversation to be happening right now, and talking about two people's wages. That's something that has to follow up. Part of it, too, this presentation that was sent to all of you, was done late on Thursday, and I was out on Friday, not that that's an excuse either, but there should have been some time and more vetting and more of a conversation in regards to that, what the genesis was of that, and what it really perhaps should be versus what's being presented at this point, and so that's really where I am on it. There were three pieces to the HR Committee meeting, two of them were completed, one was not, and one of them impacts this as well. So that's really where we are, we had half of a meeting that was incomplete, okay? Anything, any questions while in here? I don't want to hobble back.
Thank, thank you for your insight.
Okay.
Okay. Alderman Whitcomb.
Chair Donahue, I suppose this is why I hope to see this go to executive session. You know, we have two highly skilled city employees who, this is a sensitive conversation that we have to have. I admittedly don't know what the right answer is, this is a pretty unique situation for me, as far as personnel, retroactive pay, what we should do. I know, at this point, we can't place it into executive session tonight, but I am wondering if the right course of action is to get it back in HR, address it promptly in executive session there perhaps, and then to bring it back to the, the next meeting.
And you're entitled to make that motion, if you wish. Well, actually, yeah, we have a motion on the floor to prove it, as described aptly by Alderman Tadde, so we would have to mo, vote on that motion first, I believe.
Point of order, I believe Alderman, Alderman Tadde could rescind her motion if she so choose, and then we wouldn't have to vote on it, vote it down.
Yes, she could.
So.
I feel pretty comfortable with my motion.
Okay. And I'm just trying to remember if the motion to refer takes precedence, so for the main motion, I think it may, and I can certainly take a minute to look that up, if you want me to. So, or am I just...
Motion to refer does take precedence.
I'm sorry?
Motion to refer does take precedence.
Precedence, yeah, over the main motion, so what we would do is vote on the motion to refer first, if that fails, then we would vote on the main motion, okay? So is a second to referring it to the HR Committee? I didn't hear a second.
I'll say it.
Okay. So now we can discuss that, if you wish, or we can vote on it. Alderman Clifford.
Yeah, just because of the fact that we are talking about salaries here, I think that, and the Public Safety Committee does talk, does refer, have that charge for the budget, I would think the Public Safety would be the place to be, but that's...
So the maker of the motion, we have to accept the amendment, or you can amend the amendment?
I would accept that, I, I just would like to get, get it to a committee where we could speak in executive session, and...
Okay, with the second or accept that?
Second.
Yep, okay. All right, that is now the motion before us. Alderman Tadde.
Are we able...
I'm sorry, Alderman McClure.
I know, there's only three of us, it makes it hard. I'm just wondering, are we able to refer both Public Safety and HR at the same time, to have it as a joint committee meeting?
The Board can do whatever their pleasure is, as a matter of fact, so if you want to have a joint committee, you actually can do that.
I would propose to the maker of the motion to adjust that to be a joint committee meeting of the two, that way everyone who needs to be in the room is in the room at the same time.
I am happy to do that.
Second?
Second.
All right, amend. So that, we're going to call that a friendly amendment, so we're not amending the amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just easier? Okay, great. All right, thank you. So that is the motion, does everybody know what the motion is now? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of that motion to refer to the dueling committee, dual committee, Public Safety and HR, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Again, the chair's in doubt, could I have a show of hands, those in favor, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, and those opposed? One, two? Anyway, motion passes. Thank you. That's right, there's only eight of you. Okay, so that is in committee? And two committees jointly, and you'll, let's see, so Chairwoman is Sharon Davis, and you're Chair of the HR Committee, so if the, you two can come together with a date, and I'm sure a lot of us would be happy to attend as well, so, that aren't on the committees. Excellent. Get back to my agenda. Okay, next up again is Director Coyle, so... So that's why it's good you didn't go very far, yeah. And is this, Chairman, will this require any action, and if so, will this suspend the rule?
This one, no. Absolutely not, unless you guys have questions for me.
Floor is yours.
All right.
Thank you.
So, I hope you had all gotten for your packet information in regards to some of the updates on recruiting and things that have happened since I arrived in February of 2024. You've got all of your information. I think back in September, I had presented and sort of let everybody know ahead count where we were. If you note in staffing information, in May of 2024, we had 156 full-time, year-round employees throughout all of our departments. As of July 15th of this year, we have 176 full-time, year-round employees, so we have a net gain of 20 employees that we're working with right now, so that means there's benefits, whether people are doing the buyout, or people are doing regular benefits. It's not just the number, it's the dollars that follow all of those positions. I did not include any summer seasonal positions such as DPW, or Parks and Recreation, and currently, in those numbers, the city has two full-time year-round staff who are on paid administrative leave right now, that we are paying full pay and benefits for. They are counted in those numbers, even that they are not actively in the buildings at this point in time, so that's really important. Some of the recruiting, we've had more of a presence, one of the things that I have tried to do very actively, and the Police Department has been great and very supportive of that, is when we're recruiting, we are actually using Fire Department, city as a whole, and Police Department, and we're putting our tables all right next to each other, so people understand that we're all part of the same organization, and we're pushing people back and forth amongst all the tables, so I think that's been working out really well, and it's really, I think, helping to build some bridges. There's a lot I don't know about the Police Department, or the Fire Department, and I'm learning as I go, so it's been really great, and I'm hoping to continue that. We actually were fortunate, the city spent some money on Bring Back the Trades, which happened out at Castleton University earlier this spring. We hired one of the kiddos that we were fortunate to meet there, he came on as a summer employee, and as of today, he is a full-time year-round employee with us, so I'm very excited about that. We have these kinds of things that are happening, we have a lot of great summer workers who are here, that I've worked with, Bob, we're eyeing different people, I don't know much about Parks and Rec as far as what they might be eyeing, or what they might have available, but definitely, that's where some of our sourcing should come from, so it's been kind of exciting to see the numbers going up, and knowing that we have more retirements that will be coming over the next several months, it's nice to see that we actually have some people in reserve, and they're really excited about being here, so that's great. Next on my list was compliance, just to remind people that we have a requirement for the municipal ethics training that has to be done and done online. We do have to get that done, I do have a couple of aldermen who have not completed that, or if you have, I have not gotten notified, so you need to let me know that once you've completed it, that would be great. As far as legislative updates, there are things that just got completed that are now hitting us for July 1, that we have to be aware of. Mandated benefits continue to drive up costs, and there are two more mandated benefits that have come out from the legislature. Those include cancer screenings for colorectal screenings now, that has to be covered at That has to be covered at 100% through the insurances. And then mental health parity, which has always been talked about, but the state is tightening up on what they're requiring for that, and so it continues to add to the bottom line cost of all of our benefits. As far as compensation and recruiting, there is now pay transparency. So any job that you are posting that is a bona fide position, not just casting out and saying, "We're hiring," you have to have, we have to have as an employer, a wage attached to that. And where, like New York and Boston used to say, because they did this before us, they would say, "The wage is anywhere from $1 to $100,000." Can't do that. It's got to be legitimately what the wage range is for that position that you're recruiting for. We've been doing really well with this since early spring. I knew this was coming, so as we've been posting jobs, we have been doing that, but know that it's there and it is required for any of the positions that we're looking at. There have been a lot of changes to Vermont Paid Family Medical Leave versus Federal Family and Medical Leave Act. So we need to be aware of that. The definition of a family has grown exponentially to take care of the LGBTQIA+ community. Before, there were lopped off, people who were lopped off, but now it is much more inclusive. So we just completed four CBAs in the last year and a half. We are now going to have to make sure that there is some supplemental language as far as who is identified as a family member. The other thing is with Vermont Paid Family Leave, they also cover, in the state leave versus the federal leave, domestic partners, where the federal leave doesn't count that. It has to be a married spouse. In the, in the new definitions of what a family is, it now includes civil union partners, domestic partners. Domestic partner has to be a person who has lived in the same household as the individual for six months, not seven years like it used to be to be considered domestic. So there are a lot of changes, there are a lot of accelerated timelines. We have to be looking at whether or not we're talking about Vermont State Leave or we're talking about federal leave. There are different timelines, there's different hours requirements, so it's going to take a lot of massaging and changing on this so that folks know. The other thing that has happened is there are additional leaves that have been added as well, where bereavement used to be just a benefit, now it's actually up to two weeks of time for bereavement. So I just want to be sure that folks were aware of this and aware of how quickly things are changing, and the impacts that they'll have on us as an employer here in the area. And so, as I said, there has to be language that might be included or changed for collective bargaining agreements, and there still is a requirement to protect people's personal information, and information that's provided is still confidential and cannot be released unless you have a signed statement from the employee saying it's okay to release more information. It's a little bit of a challenge for us, especially as a municipality, and having a board that sometimes weighs in on things, but understand there are things that still have to remain private and vague, I guess is the best word I can use for that. I did provide you two, we were fortunate when I first came that we started using GovPilot. That was something that Andrew Stenisti had started for some of the forms. So we have a rough applicant tracking form that we're able to use, so you can kind of see, since this system went up, what we've had for recruiting that's come through our electronic applications and how the hiring has been. Some of this, I don't want you to be distressing that no one was hired, like the administrative assistant for DPW, it's because we hired from within, but we still took outside applicants for a lot of the positions that we have. So if you've got any questions on any of that, I'm happy to talk with you about it. I do have handouts that I can send out to you that talk a little bit more about some of these changes that have occurred, if that's something that would interest you. Questions? Oh, God.
Let me start with Alderman McClure.
When looking at this document here, the Rutland City applicant tracking through GovPilot, I see three different options here. I see not hired, hired, and new. What does new mean?
New means I haven't gotten any updates from the departments where they were applying to.
Gotcha.
I've pushed it out, no response back.
Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to point something out. Under open positions, it says Recreation and Park Superintendent. As this board knows, we did send a letter to the mayor, who was seven to three, appointing Kim Peters. So until the judge decides that, or Superintendent Peters decides to take the position, it's my position that she is still in that position. I just wanted to make that clear.
So the record reflect that as not being open, in other words, is the suggestion? I think I saw a hand from Alderman McClure again. Yes?
Yes, I'm just looking here. It does not state here that the position, it says under open positions, but it says actively recruiting. So I just want to make that aware. Additionally, Chair Coyle did mention that there are two individuals actively on administrative leave, and they are counted in the counts. So I guess I'm a little unsure as to Alderman Clifford's prerogative here, as these were laid out for just the numbers.
Making a point, Alderman McClure.
Okay.
To remind everyone where we're at.
And that's fine, it can be a TBD. I mean, it, it's an issue that has not yet been resolved.
Right.
How's that?
Correct, correct.
Backing up to the ethics training, I just want to let you know, I did enjoy taking that, actually. I thought I knew most of it, but I learned a lot and found some really great nuances in there that were kind of quite interesting to learn, and so I thank you for encouraging me to complete it.
You mean poke, poke, poke? No, it's not good.
Alderman Gillum.
Just, just trying to back up the department head here, that the other agencies that we are involved in, the Sala Waste District and the Buss, are going through the same thing the city's going through. So it's not just our municipality is involved in this, it's all the municipalities are going through this process. So, so the people at home understand it's not just the city of Rutland. This is a major piece of legislation that got passed by the state. Again, state passing it off to the towns to deal with it without any funding, so.
Surprise.
Sorry, just a comment.
That's fine.
Alderman McClure.
I do have another question about the Rutland City applicant tracking through GovPilot. I do see here that next to that status bar, I had mentioned there is a gender bar.
I just threw in gender.
Okay, I was going to ask, is that something we can see, or is that something that's hidden?
No, I threw that in, rather than put people's names in there.
Understood.
So that you understood, and where there is a blank, then that person did not identify one way or the other.
Thank you. I just was looking at this, and I thought it was very interesting, and all of the hired and not hired and new of the hired, there's only three women, which is very interesting. So, thank you.
Okay. Director Coyle, anything, anything further on that? Okay.
That's it for this round.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, it was very, very helpful.
Sorry, I was way ahead of myself tonight. Um, sorry.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we have Treasurer Markowski, and I think the first one is kind of an update without an action, I think, so we don't have to suspend any rules. The floor is yours.
Yeah, no action. I just wanted to provide, the board was, we met on Thursday to set the tax rate, but I thought I would come to the meeting and just go over some of the numbers for the public and what to look for. We will be generating tax bills this week on Wednesday, so should be in the mail next week. And, and we, we let the printer know we need to have them out by the first in mailboxes. So hopefully, we're getting a jumpstart, so hopefully they'll be out a little bit sooner. And some confusion is that most installments are due on the 15th, that first installment is due August 31st, so you do have the 30 days, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that, and just some highlights from the tax rate. So the municipal tax rate was up over last year. Last year, 2.017, this year, 2.1536. So on a $150,000 home, that increase is, for the year, $204.48. So, and then through that process, we always evaluate, is there a surplus to, to apply toward, toward the tax rate? So through that process, I just wanted to highlight that the board approved the two additional positions in the Police Department, and when you calculate that, that was $220,000, which equates to $32 on your tax bill. Just thought that was interesting to share. Also, there was an expenditure from the Department of Public Works, vehicle purchase, that's about $8 as well on, that was in addition to what the, when we were going through the rate. I, I thought that was interesting, you wanted to share that. The, and then the education rates, if you haven't read or you don't know, the rates for the homestead rate was actually down this year, so you'll see some offset in your tax bill, homestead. If you are landlord, non-homestead, you will see an increased municipal and on the education side. So as we work through doing the tax bills, we'll update the city website with the new rates, the special benefits district rate, and all of those things, so. And please call the office if you have questions, anyone, so. And I really want to thank the board for, this year I had a lot of board members with specific questions, in and out of the office, phone calls, so I really appreciate that. It's nice to get a jumpstart and know what we're going to discuss in the, when we actually do set the rates. So thank you for that. Thanks.
Mary, can I just mention that, also that Cesar Langley had mentioned the grand list value being down a net of about a little over $6.5 million this year. So that's important to factor in.
Right.
When creating that tax rate, as well as that the board would, the, the department heads will be basically functioning on the board-approved budget, which was $807,000 less than the original mayor's budget, which is, which is approved by the voters. So they'll be operating on a little slimmer budget, is the intent going forward for the next year.
Right, yeah.
About 2.5, 2.8 million? I'm sorry, 25.8 million?
25.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
And then, one other little thing that I had noticed by reading these minutes, and you're on the board, I think you are treasurer of the Rutland Redevelopment Authority Board?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I noticed that they're reducing their rate slightly.
Yes.
From, noted 5.121 down to, or it was 5.142, down to 5.121. Just a slight variation, but down a little, which is good.
Yeah, little change in the grand list, yeah.
It raises about 280,000, I think.
Yeah, so 280,000 is the target for that rate, based on the grand list in the special benefits district. There were a few changes, value increases there, so we were able to at least level and keep it a little lower, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah.
Good job.
All right, well, thanks.
All right, thanks for all your hard work, too, in preparing that presentation. It went very smoothly, I thought.
Okay.
Okay. No action there, very informative. Well, we do have items for action, so I guess we do need to suspend the rules to take this up tonight, but this will be the resolutions on the Municipal Bond Bank document, documents for signature. So if we could have that motion.
Some move.
All right, thank you. Second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, so tonight I'm presenting the bond documents from, for the, it's $5.25 million borrowing, which is a combination of a million-dollar sidewalk bond, a $2.5 million water main project bond, a 1.75 million capital project bond for Giorgetti. I want to go back to the water mains, and I had notes on my desk and I forgot to bring them, but Moore's Place was one of the streets for that bond. The construction will start August, September on that project. I'm not sure that it'll all be done, and I'm not sure, there were four specific streets and I couldn't remember, but it was Moore's Place and Chaplain Avenue.
Curtis.
A portion of Curtis Avenue. There was another one. But anyway, spoke with the city engineer, just, we hear a lot about Moore's Place, so that, that's good, so I wanted to share that. So that's what these documents are, prepared by Attorney Fletcher with Stitzel Page SP&amp;F Attorneys. So I had a motion in the packet to circulate. There is only one document, it's the resolution and certificate that requires board signature, and then the rest of the documents are required, the acting mayor to, to sign those. So there is a motion that was prepared by the attorney as well for these.
Okay, and I should point out that those are all voter-approved bond issues.
Correct, voter-approved, but I, I should say, the source of repayment on the sidewalk bond, you're going to see that next year for the general fund. The water main project that is funded in the water fund, so user fees. And the, the Giorgetti project, that's the first borrowing that we had from the capital planning, so that'll come out of the really local option tax revenues.
Was there any established interest rate yet?
Not yet. The closing is scheduled for August 7th.
Okay, so we won't know that till then.
And then they will let us know.
Okay. Yeah. Alderman Gillum.
Yes, just for the people at home, understand that the sidewalk bond was voted on in March of '23. The water main project was voted on March '23, and the Giorgetti bond for the cooler, the chiller, it was voted this March of '25. So we're coming in a little late on this because we had to go through all the engineering and everything else to get ready, so that's why it's taken us so long to do this. So this is just coming out from two years ago.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. All right, so I think you're, are you going to make a motion to circulate? Yes, very good.
Having seen and reviewed the resolution and certificate and attachments to it related to the issuance of the city's $5.25 million general obligation bond and its sale to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, I hereby move the adoption and approval of the resolution and certificate as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Okay. And just want to point out, I think that we, Acting Mayor Alair is on there as signing for the mayor, and the rest of us is signing for the board, is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Or is he signing for both mayor and board president?
Um, mayor. I, I already spoke with counsel about the mayor being away and making sure that I get these right, so.
Okay.
You'll be signing as the mayor, yeah.
Just a point, just a point of order, this was a blanket, so all the forms we're going to sign, this motion covers everything.
Yeah, this covers everything.
Thank you.
Rocked and red by counsel. Okay.
So is this the original you want us to sign? Going around, is that what we have?
And we got to vote now, before she signs.
Yeah, and I moved to circulate for signature as well.
Yeah, don't sign yet.
Don't sign yet.
Vote on it and then sign it.
Right, we'll do this right. Okay. Any further discussion or questions for Treasurer Markowski? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Okay.
Can circulate for signature.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so now, does that go with you tonight, or does it go with the clerk?
I'll pick it up on the other side, we'll get it all signed, and I'll ship it to the attorney tomorrow, so.
She's giving the man.
Okay. It should end up back with Susan Clark.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Mr. President, point of order, so everybody knows this coming, she's got all the pages marked here, so be careful you sign the right pages.
Yeah, there's only one.
Ah, right, got it. Okay, we've moved the executive sessions to the end of the meeting, so we'll be going to the reports of standing committee, starting with Alderman Whitcomb and the Finance Committee, meeting of July 15th. Alderman Whitcomb.
Thank you, Chair Donahue. The Finance Committee met on July 15th. The agenda item was the Police Department Situation Table Expense Approval. The committee members present were myself as chair, Alderman Kupaly, Alderman Davis, and Alderman McClure. Others present were Mayor Dunges, Treasurer Markowski, Chief Kukol, Commander Whitehead, Alderman Talbot, Alderman Tatiyo, Alderman Clifford, Alderman Donahue, and Gordon Rochillo from the Rutland Herald. The meeting was called to order at 6:10 PM. The meeting began with a review of the May 13 Finance Committee meeting in which the Situation Table at the Police Department was discussed. During the May 13 Finance Committee meeting, the committee discussed the Situation Table and was supportive of the initiative, but it requested the issue remaining committee until receipts for the full scope of work had been completed. Chief Kukol chaired the committee, a detailed expense sheet outlining the costs of all aspects of the work associated with the Situation Table space at the police station. Bear with me as I read this marathon motion. me as I read this marathon motion. Alderwoman McClure moved a motion to authorize $65,971 to be dispersed from the opioid settlement fund for infrastructure upgrades at the Police Department to support the Situation Table Initiative, a collaborative cross-system coordination initiative to assist individuals with opioid use disorder and any co-occurring substance use disorder slash mental health conditions, supporting them in treatment, recovery, and connecting them to care pending the approval of the listed table and shares expense by the Board of Finance. The motion passed 4 to 0 and I so move.
Do we have a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody said second before I got.
Second.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tadio, seconded. Any questions for the chair or the committee members present? I think all of us were there pretty much, so we should be well informed. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve said resolution, or said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The meeting adjourned at 6:24 PM.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Alderman Whitcomb. Next, we go down to just a report of a representative, Alderman Donahue. So since there's no motion here, I'll go ahead and read it. But I did want to just update folks on a couple of things that were in the Traffic Committee. Chief and his staff and Engineer Gillum had attended. One of the things that was brought to us at the last meeting, Stanley Madison had mentioned 299 West Street, which is West Street down here where the bridge is, and he was concerned about the bridge being a little too high and people kind of leaping over it. So we talked about putting the speed cart down there, and that was kind of what we were looking to do, but then it turned out that we actually had the speed cart down there recently. And so there is a significant amount of data that I now have that the chief gave me today, that's an analysis report of what's going on down there. And we'll take a closer look at it, and if there's anything we need to come back to the board with. But one of the things that we all kind of agreed on is the project would be, you know, potentially millions of dollars to lower the bridge, which was one suggestion made that evening. We're not inclined to go in that direction, but enforcement is a different story. And the speed cart was going to be the first step, but they were one step ahead of our first step, and I already had it accomplished. I'm just going to read one thing that I think is a good point about this, that the average speed, and they have approaching traffic and receding traffic, so east and west, average speed is just 25 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone and 28 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. So generally, the median speed was 26 and 29. So generally, people are paying attention to the speed limits down there and not necessarily leaping the bridge. However, I did want to note, because I found it interesting, that the speed trailer, speed cart as they call it, did actually clock somebody at 87 miles an hour. So that was probably one end of the bridge to the other. So Mr. Madison wasn't completely wrong. He may have actually seen something like that, because that's incredibly fast and dangerous. But it was an anomaly. In the works, most people are really behaving down there and following the speed limit, and in fact staying below the speed limit. So that's good. But I think that now that we have this document and more data, we'll continue to keep that in the Traffic Committee and report back to the board anything that we think that the board should authorize us to consider moving forward beyond, if it's beyond enforcement. And then, one other item was that I think is noteworthy. There were some smaller items we talked about signage here and there. But the other item was just, which is a fairly significant issue, the merge lane on North Main Street after the traffic lane at, across from CBS Pharmacy, if you will, going through. And one of the steps that they're going to take, and it was recommended by the city engineer, was to sort of, to actually start to move, they have, they call them sign bridges, and I'm used, that's my turn, chief, I don't know if I got that quite right, but it was the arm that goes over, and there are a couple back, so from North Main Street, you're coming back onto Main Street, heading towards South Main Street, there's a couple of those that go out over. And actually, they're going to be putting some warning signs up there about the merge farther back, because the one that's there existing there is basically right at the merge, and that's that one arm. There are a couple of arms back where they could start to do, merge 1,300 feet, merge 700 feet. And that's the intent at this point, is to start to give people a little more notice ahead and on the way down through there. So then, in hopes that that will be enough for people to have a little more information, a little more in advance. So I appreciate the efforts of the DPW in doing that, in trying to take some steps to continue to fine-tune it, smooth it out, see if we can make it better. But I will keep that, you know, certainly that will be a topic that'll stay in the committee, and I'll report back to the board with just updates on that. So that's the representative from the Traffic Committee safety report. Okay, now we're on to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. I don't think we had any, but we do have a, under the Board of Control Commissioners, Board of Cannabis Commissioners, in this case, there is a request for a renewal of a license. And I didn't know particularly.
Motion to go into the Board of Cannabis Commissioners?
Thank you.
Second. Okay, that was what I was going to ask, if you wanted to refer to your committee, or if you want to go into the full board tonight, because you're also chair of that committee, but you prefer to have the.
We typically just vote to go into the Board of.
Bring the whole board.
If they're approved.
Okay, so we sit as the Board of Cannabis Commissioners, so the motion is made and seconded to go into that board at this time.
We have to vote on it now. We have now have to vote on going in the commissioner.
We have to vote on going into the Board of Control Commissioners.
Yep, I know. That's what I'm about to do.
Okay, good.
Yep. I'm just stating what we're doing before we do it. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does anyone have anything they would like to bring up about the application then?
I'd like to.
Let me start with, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Tadio, and then Alderwoman McClure.
I do know that the applicants are here, but I was going to make a motion to approve the Mountain Girl cannabis retailer's renewal.
Renew.
Second.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded. Stay inside the rail for now, Alderwoman McClure.
I would actually like to invite the proprietors up to the podium to speak about their experience owning a dispensary in Rutland City. They were the very first one.
Okay, and we can do that. Let me just see if there's any questions inside the rail first. Is there anything inside the rail? Okay, we'll go outside the rail, and if you don't mind, stating your name and address for the record, please.
Josh Macduff.
Anna Macduff.
Where 174 West Street is the location of our business. Yeah, we've been in operation since day one of the legal market, license number one in the state. It's been a point of pride for us to represent Rutland City as a historic first in the cannabis industry. And the landscape has changed quite a bit over three years, and you know, as you know, everywhere you look, there was once a vacant place that is now a cannabis dispensary. So, you know, here we are, three years later, happy to serve the community, happy to move forward as we expand our business into cultivation and manufacturing and wholesale distribution. We're happy to offer more jobs within the city and the neighboring areas. And yeah, look forward to making Rutland proud.
Feel free to.
No, I mean, yes, to that. I just, we have doubled our workforce since day one. We were about five, now we're about 10. And that's with the shrinking market, so we're going strong.
Excellent. And that's how many years now? Is that one, one complete year?
We'll be going into year three.
Year three, wow, fantastic. Wow, that went by fast.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve. Alderman Gillum.
I just want to speak in positive to this operator, being from the neighborhood. They have kept their property very neat and clean. They've worked with the Chinese restaurant next door to make sure they didn't have any bumps in the parking lot. When they first started, there was a little bump, but now they have solved that and working with that. And they've kept their business top-notch. So I think we should be voting for this, because we should reward a business that takes care of their store.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Anything else inside the rail, or any questions for the applicants while they're here? Hearing none. Thank you very much for being here in person. And it's not always that that happens, so we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call the motion then. All those in favor of the motion to approve the renewal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Now we'll have a motion to go out of the Board of Cannabis Commissioners.
Second.
And all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're back in regular session. Thank you again. All right, any, before we go into executive session, any unfinished business, miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? Alderwoman Tadio.
I have a tiny bit of new business, and I would like to refer it to the Rec Committee for further discussion, but the discussion that I know has happened occasionally, but I'd like to bring it back, but that is of building a skate park in Rutland City.
Okay.
Second.
I just heard that this week myself.
Someone brought it to me. This is not an original idea. A couple people, constituents brought this to me, so.
Okay, excellent. All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. And if the board had indulged me, I wondered if someone would make a motion for me. I'd like to ask if we could, along constituent lines actually, if we could ask the Department of Public Works Committee, DPW Committee, to take in the issue of flooding and catch basins at 81 Killington Avenue.
Some move.
Thank you. Any questions?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Alderwoman?
Can you provide some context as to what section of Killington Avenue that is?
Yes.
It's such a big street.
Right. 81 is about, so going west to east, that way, it's about three quarters of the way up the road on the left, and there's two catch basins there, both of which flood significantly.
Thank you. I grew up in that neighborhood, so I know where it is, but just for the folks at home.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Anything further on that? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thank you, motion carries. I appreciate you doing that for me. If not, at this point, I think we can go into the executive session if there's no further unfinished new, old, anything? Okay, I'll go ahead and, so we'll start with the motion. Now, I had some motions written down here. So let me go with what has been suggested. And it's executive session number one. The motion is to enter an executive session with the inclusion of Acting Mayor Alair, Human Resources, I'm assuming that's Director Coyle. It's mentioned in here Deputy City Clerk, I might discuss that with you, just after I read the rest of the motion, and the City Treasurer, to discuss records exempt from access to public records as allowed under Title I, Section 313A6.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and the one nuance here is that I wasn't sure if the, this is the Deputy City Clerk, is also, potentially has sort of a conflict of her own that she would prefer not to be potentially in the executive session. So if that isn't an issue for anybody here, it certainly isn't for me, and I'd like to respect that, that we would just not include that one person on the inclusion list.
I need a question.
What?
On this issue. Is it dealing with public records?
No, actually, union.
Oh, it's union, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so if that's acceptable to the maker and Alderman McClure.
Could you just repeat the request, please?
Yes, okay, so we'll do it this way. I'll leave it out this time and just say, motion to enter into executive session with inclusion of Acting Mayor Alair, Human Resources, I'm going to say Director Coyle, and the City Treasurer, to discuss records exempt from the access to public records as allowed under Title I, Section 313A6. And that's all I can tell you about it, honestly.
So when we get this done, the motion, we'll put the state statute in there, I believe. Am I correct?
I'm sorry.
You're going under some state statute to go into executive session. We got to put that in the motion.
Yeah, so, yeah, I can actually have that.
We don't have to read it, we understand that, but reflect it in the record.
Yeah, I actually have the statute here, which is 1VSA 313, executive sessions, subsection 313.
Point of order, I believe we have to approve a motion indicating which state statute we're going into executive session under, and then we have to approve a separate motion indicating we'll be.
Yeah, I've read that both ways, but I'll do it that way just because, and then we can debate whether we need to announce it another time. But, so let's go with a motion to go into executive session under VSA, 1VSA 313, subsection 313, executive sessions of the Vermont State statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then we'll go back to the inclusion list, which is the executive session including Acting Mayor Alair, Human Resource Director Coyle, and City Treasurer Mary Markowski, to discuss records exempt from the access to public records as allowed under Title I, Section 313A6.
So moved.
We have a motion to go into executive session under all that. Yes.
So moved.
Alderwoman Savage, thank you. Do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Alderman Kupaly. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.